Thank you to welcome everybody to the January 8, 2024 Farmington School Board Meeting. We already called the meeting to order earlier this evening. We had non-public session. Everybody could please join me for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do we have any public participation this evening?
Oh, I can do it now. No, just a quick, just a quick thank you to the Farmington Police Department and actually Fire Department and Rescue for their participation in the holiday bash. We had 24 teams here. It was huge, a five-day event. And we unfortunately did need the services of the Fire Department and first responders, but it was a fairly minor injury. So the young man is okay. But just to have the police there throughout the week was certainly the amount, the size of the crowds that we had was certainly appreciated. So I wanted to thank them publicly. Thank you.
All right, minutes. Entertain a motion to approve minutes of November 27. Don't all jump at once. A second, any discussion?
Is that a motion for all of them?
Sorry, yes, for public and non-public. For November 27th. I'll also, I'll add December 4th as well, public session, non-public session one and non-public session two.
Can we add them or do they have to be two separate votes since they've been two separate dates?
Well, I'm gonna abstain from 12:04, so.
Okay, we'll do them separate. We'll make the motion to approve minutes for November 27th, public session and non-public session one.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to accept December 4th minutes, public session, non-public session one and non-public session two.
Second.
All the, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstain. I was absent. Reports. First, we have Student Services. Hello?
Statistics for you to review. From that, I, the numbers of special education students have stayed about the same. You know, some leaving, some coming into special education. As well as the number of students that require 504 accommodations. We have seen a slight increase in students that are identified to receive support under McKee Vento or students that are court involved. And by and large, kids that are experiencing these kinds of difficulties have had some kind of issue involving substance use in their families. That doesn't apply to all of them, but that is, is a real common thread. And I just, I do want to give a real shout out to the counselors in the schools for supporting the students, identifying them, supporting their needs, and, you know, making sure that they're fed and clothed and, and that they have someone to talk to about the things that they're experiencing. Which kind of folds into the next piece. We identified a grant, ARP homeless grant, applied for that did anything that was needed in terms of editing and that has been approved. So that will be some money coming back to the district for supporting those kids. As far as staffing goes, we continue to celebrate the staff that we have that are doing a wonderful job with the students and really trying to be creative about how to meet kids' needs and continue to struggle to fill any open positions, unfortunately. So if you're out there and you have a special education teaching certification or you're interested in being a parent educator, we have some sweet kids up at Valley View that could really use your support. At the end of December, I went down to the Department of Ed to start working on, it should say procedures, not policy and procedures. The procedures, special education procedures. That has to be reviewed every year. So we talked a little bit about that and working on that. And our special education forms, which actually leads into part of number seven, where I'm going to be working with the case managers on, on e-filing and using Nessus for our e-file as that seems to make the most sense. As far as compliance goes, we continue to be at 92%, so that's gone up and down and up and down. But, you know, stayed between 92 and 95% for compliance. And our case managers are right on top of all of the kids' files and, you know, really wanting to be compliant and, but also thinking about parents and their needs and, you know, when they can meet and such. The other thing that happened was some training that we did for the building administrators in the role of LEA, which stands for Local Education Agency Representative, so that they have even more robust of a background in special education as they sit in on some of those meetings.
Questions? Does anybody else have anything for Colleen? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, curriculum.
I share with everybody in case of a one updated report that included some things on it that I had not uploaded into an updated report in the school board folder. First of all, we will be looking at our mid-year assessments. I'm looking to have a report to you at my next meeting in February and to provide you with some data. But this gives you just a graphic of, or I should say a table of the different assessments that we do perform mid-year as we are evaluating student growth and progress. Regarding student growth and performance, I recently took time to not just look at individual grades or schools, but to look at just what is reported by the state for the district as a whole. And I came across a wonderful finding that I had not anticipated. If you look on the second page, if we look at student proficiency and growth, this is summarized for the entire district and is shown for both English Language Arts and Mathematics from 2018 to 2023. Last spring, we had percentages of proficiency and growth that in all instances surpassed those values from 2018. So this is again showing that kind of incremental change and improvement that we are seeing. And I wanted to point that out to the board.
I love that kind of data, so thank you.
Yes.
Oh, I don't want data in general. I like C.
But when I looked at it and was filling in the chart and realized, oh my goodness, look at where we are. That was really something to celebrate. I will begin assessing educational programs in art and STEM this January. I'm going to be meeting with the individual teachers first and then collectively in each of those areas. We'll be looking at this as part of our curriculum review cycle. The idea behind that being we would identify any maybe new student areas of interest that we should explore and that might need for the following year, any kind of fiscal budgeting support. There are two projects that I've been working on at the high school. The first one I will defer to unfinished business. And the second one is the Program of Studies. I did print for you a copy of the Program of Studies. It, I would say is complete, except in the case where we have some numbers for the identifying courses that still need to be created in Power School. Other than that, it's in a form ready to go and be utilized. And I am requesting the board's approval of the Program of Studies so the Guidance Department can move forward. I will point out some of the changes are summary organization of the location of the things in the Program of Studies. That's primarily what was done to make, to work to make it a little more clear. That's also evidenced by the table of contents that is new at the beginning of the Table of Studies. When this becomes a digital document, there will also be hyperlinks from each of those sections to where it's located in the Program of Studies.
And when is the civic naturalization exam is required current, like for this year's seniors?
We've actually already been starting to track student progress because they can do that in their course that they take.
Okay.
So, yes.
Okay.
That's already been in place and been worked on.
And completing the FAFSA is now a graduation, is that our graduation requirement or is that from the state?
From the state. I know that it was being reviewed to retract that, but currently it's in place.
It is in place.
Yes.
Interesting. Okay. For everybody.
Right. The understanding would be that we would not overlook any student in fulfilling paperwork that could potentially position them for scholarships, for getting, being financial aid in any kind of postgraduate work that they would do or
Now.
studies that they would do.
For the FAFSA or FAFSA waiver, is that there, because there's a student login and a parent login? For this to be meeting the requirement, is that the student portion or the parent portion?
That's a good question.
Okay. Because I, and I ask because I, I have had conversations in the past regarding FAFSA and parents unwillingness to complete.
Which is why.
So that could be slightly problematic, I suppose, if you want to graduate. If that is what the requirement is, I don't know.
Which is why it's being looked at again. The intention in putting it in place was good to not overlook anyone, but on the flip side, not everybody wants to be mandated to complete that.
Just, I mean, just kind of interesting.
If the board is willing, I recognize if this was just given to the board to get it accomplished.
Right.
However, if the board would like to review this, that can certainly be looked at for the next meeting in two weeks.
I would just like to.
I would like.
Give it a.
Yep.
That's fine.
One's over.
Yeah.
And I thank you in advance. With my appreciation that the board would do that. I've asked that this be finalized by the end of January so that we can begin the process of Power School with, with a goal of online enrollment and having everything all sewed up by the end of May. That's our working timeline.
Great.
Excuse me. This is somewhat related, maybe. Is there a working timeline for the school calendar? Just because I had a parent reach out to me and ask me that.
We can have that for you for the next board meeting. We do have a draft document that's already prepared. I wasn't sure when you needed it, so now I know.
Yeah, and well, I think it was one of the things that I said we can do that at the next meeting.
Governor Wentworth approved theirs in mid-December. And I believe the assemblage of our calendar is based on their being approved.
I was like, well, if we fall in line with the vote, then.
Now, the, are the classes that are gray new or draft?
No, there, there are classes that alternate.
Okay.
Except in world languages, we have graded out French since we do not currently have a French teacher.
Okay.
But yet, we would want to continue that.
Okay.
If we were able to. So English has the largest course offerings, but they do alternate offering in odd and even years, different courses.
I'd like to acknowledge high school administration, guidance, as well as Kathleen for their diligence in helping us to get to this point.
Does anybody have any other questions?
It's here or not or in generalities, but we did hear from principal looking for some clarification on.
Oh, credits.
To. Did that get turned over to you?
Yep.
Okay, because I, that was my first thing. It was like, I bet Kathleen would know something about that.
Yeah, we did do a lot of looking at Ed 306. We looked at past programs of studies. I actually even went into all of the transcripts from last year's graduating class to see what was that. Here's where that continuity of guidance counselors, some of that is kind of had to backtrack and figure it out. But we are confirmed that we have two diplomas. One is the 28 credit diploma. That's our standard diploma. Students can get that diploma with distinction by taking some more academic level classes. For example, in math, taking pre-calculus as opposed to taking more exploratory class. Also, we have the 20 credit diploma. That, however, is really for students in exceptional circumstances. We want to encourage all of our students to be working toward our standard high school diploma that represents high level of achievement and study here at Farmington. But recognize there are some extenuating circumstances for some students, so there would be that 20 credit diploma.
And that would be case by case?
Yes. Yes, it's not a blanket.
A bunch of seniors in, in May saying, now we're gonna do, we're going for the 20.
Yeah.
Before their junior year. It has to be defined.
Right, yeah.
Mary, you might want to note page nine because that, the bottom of that page answered the question that I have too in terms of why 28 versus 20, and that pretty clearly spells it out.
What defines the distinction? Is there, it could be in here. I'm just asking. Since I flipped back to page nine, I might as well.
It looks, it looks like it's the scholars program that.
Yes. Oh, that aligns. Okay. So if they are a New Hampshire scholar, they are getting.
Right.
Okay.
That, that's the program through which they're taking the more rigorous course load that then gives them the distinction on their graduation diploma.
Okay, that makes sense. Any other questions for Kathleen on that? And Kathleen will be to be continued under old business. Financials.
Hey. I put all four of the usual reports as well as some bank reconciliations in your folder for you. Some highlights in revenue, we collected $2,746,019, some odd dollars. In the month of December, we expended $1.1 million, dollars and rounding. Grants have been reported through November. The reconciliations for food service, operating fund, as well as Henry Wilson have been caught up through the end of December. So our cash is balanced. Reminders have been sent to high school and elementary as well to complete the reconciliations. Title four was approved thanks to Kathleen's efforts for the year 2023, as well as that ARP homeless grant, thanks to Colleen's efforts. In Esser, we've spent a total of $1,210, excuse me, $210,061.85 and we've recovered that amount as well. There's $1,350,565.44 left to be allocated from our initial allocation. And we've spent approximately 65% of the budget that we have planned so far.
Includes encumbering full salary for the entire school year?
The 65 would actually only be an actual figure in this circumstance, although the grant report would project that information. Part of the highlight there was the TASTA acquisition, which has been initialized and paid for so we can continue with that project. The SO3 Committee has continued meeting and I have some other stuff to bring up a little bit later on regarding some projects that we're working on. For that, I have here, I probably need a motion for this, a letter from Kathy Seaver and the town of Farmington. They received a check written to the Farmington High School Scholarship Fund in the amount of $2,000 and a gift card, which remains with the letter.
Lock it up.
Those who don't know. But the, I will need a motion to actually accept this. I believe that the issue here, and you can make a motion for either or both, but I think the issue here is that the town must hold the scholarship fund and this was written like kind of to the high school instead of, I think the town is who needs to have it. So Kathy put a note on here to have you accept it and then disperse it to them. I'm not sure if that's the easiest way to do it, although I'm perfectly happy and willing to do that and it's not a burden for our department to do it, especially with your approval now. But, or I can work with them to find another solution or find out where it goes. That's all I have for direct financials, although I do have some projects to revisit too. I forget what order they're in. And then there's like an Esser three part on the agenda, but we can combine that with all these other, like I know Power School was listed out and stuff like that, but we can put it all under Esser for now. Because there's some of that is discussion I want to have together.
Well, we can. We're gonna start unfinished business, so I didn't, I don't want to hold you guys up either, so.
Yeah, does that mean we'll, we'll come back to the, all the other good stuff too? Okay, perfect. Yep, so that sums it up for the monthly report.
Does anybody have any questions from that? He's not going anywhere, so.
I'm running.
Thank you. So moving on to unfinished business and back to Kathleen for the plane building project.
So it's wonderful to have everybody here to, again, same person, how excited everyone is in Farmington, in the district, at the SAU. And we also want to extend that excitement to the community because this is an incredible opportunity for our students. We have been granted the award to begin building a plane September 2025. So the Aviation Museum would not be putting out an RFP after this coming year. They would, are awarding it to us now to give us the time to gear up in the next year and a half for that project. So I'm bringing this to the board to ask for their reaffirmation of bringing this project to the students here at the high school. I do want to mention there is support for this through policy. Policy IFA, which is Instructional Needs of Each Individual Student, does talk about addressing students' different talents, interests and academic development. And this project clearly fits in that area because it is such a unique project. And again, we would not be looking at just building the plane, but also involving students in other ancillary areas to be involved, even in terms of bringing the kindergartners over to see, you know, touch a truck, they could be touching a plane.
And just for the people at home, because I can't remember when we brought this up the first time. This is an actual flying, human-sized plane. And maybe everybody understood that initially. I did not. I, upon, when I read the literature from the get-go prior, I thought it was like a model plane. Yes, I did. That is truly what I thought, reading the material. And it wasn't until Kathleen had brought it to the board the last time that I was like, oh wait, this is like a real plane. So in case there's anybody out there that thought this was like a soapbox derby type of thing, it is not. Because that's what I thought.
So we also have Policy IGA, which is Curriculum Development. And it talks about a variety of approaches to education and providing flexible and purposeful approaches to teaching and learning, investigating new curricular ideas, developing and improving programs. So the school board does have the authority to make decisions around curriculum. I will say that this project fits underneath what we have here under the umbrella of STEM. Valley View does have a STEM teacher. Henry Wilson with Mr. Henry does also have a STEM teacher. And we did have a STEM teacher here at the high school, Ms. McCracken, who had moved on to another district. So we currently don't have that kind of a project, but yet we would just be, in a sense, having this be the program to fill our STEM project. So it is supported in our policy.
Boy, second grade is building in the airplane.
See, that's where my mind, why it went that way.
Think of balsam plane building, like we could, you know, putting kids.
I've already volunteered to be the test pilot.
She did. She did. We have it on record. I will tell you that I. Oh, my.
If we can paint it red, yeah.
Yeah. Or maybe the orange.
I also brought this to the high school faculty meeting last week. There were, and then put out a survey. There were 24 respondents to the survey. 20 of those folks said, yes, let's bring this project to the high school. Five said they'd be willing to directly work in the project. And there were 11 that said they would like to indirectly work with the project. So that was really heartwarming to know. So we have our faculty support. We are going to be then announcing this to the community, should the board in fact reaffirm this. There is a timeline set. The Aviation Museum at their January 18th annual meeting is going to be announcing this project to their membership. And they are then going to be looking to put this out in the media that we would be receiving this. On the 24th, Tango Flight, who is the company in Texas providing the curriculum and the mentoring, they are going to be joining us here at Farmington High School. And we are going to be looking for, to be receiving a memorandum of agreement between the Aviation Museum, Tango Flight and Farmington School District as this will be a long-term project. We're looking at really beginning it now and it wouldn't be ending until June of 2029 with the lead in time and then the four-year of the build.
And the intention is, if all goes well, not base if it can fly or not, I think that, no. That they would like to, this would be the first plane, if it.
So the way I put it in the proposal, that it would be reasonable and fair on all parties if in, well, during the project that we were evaluating our progress, but also toward the end of the project to be evaluating. You know, we don't know five years from now, our, what our circumstances will be here, but we do have that option to work on then the next plane. So it's an exciting opportunity that will see multiple cohorts of students working on this project.
Because we would actually sell the plane.
Tang, yes, Tango Flight will.
Not we, we, not we.
They will be selling the plane. That money gets used then to buy the next kit.
Got it.
Permanent curriculum.
If I may add that former board member, Telly King, Integrated Design, he has. I'm a cutting tool person by trade. That's what. I'm a cutting tool person by trade. That's what I was brought up in, and that was my previous career before I sold dirt. And, and I spent a lot of time with him at his facility, and he's beyond excited about being able to help bring in, help show machining and, and some of these kids as an outreach to this. If they don't understand it, he'll take them down to the shop and say, okay, this is a CAD machine, and this is how this works, and you have to, you know. So there's a, there's an auxiliary learning.
Yep.
Potential to this if kids are interested in going in the machine. Couple of other manufacturing places around it were also involved.
Yeah, we had, Charlie came to the meeting with, when they came. We had a number, I mean, gosh, it was almost.
Couple associations.
I was gonna say, I feel like there was almost 20 of us.
Experimental Aircraft Association, they have a chapter down in Sky Haven Airport. There's the CAP, which is Civil Air Patrol. They are very much interested. Even, I will be putting up posters, they're having an opportunity in February for students to come and see their, what they do there, and we'll have the opportunity to offer free flights to students, whether permitting and all of that. But as a way of also engaging them in flight.
And we had a student that is, I.
Yeah, Ian.
Working on his pilot's license.
Yes.
That met with all of these folks.
So.
Probably not fully licensed, but.
But one of the reasons for reaffirming the plane building project is that we really need this commitment to be irrespective of any changes in, in school board members of administration at the SAU, of administration here, or teachers, like this is what we do. So just as you would have a music program, or a world languages program, or an art program, this would be our STEM program, and this is the project that we're doing in that program.
I'm gonna make that motion, but I'm not sure we can guarantee it commitment if there's a significant change in school board, just so you know.
That, I did, I said, we can't bind another board.
Can't bind another board, but I mean, we could certainly, and I'll make that motion to reaffirm our commitment to the plane project.
Second.
Then we can do more discussion.
Yeah, discussion.
I just wanted to mention, they will be giving us a memorandum of, of, in a draft form, so we can look at the details of that to see if there's something that needs to be put into that. Certainly, we can't get halfway through building a plane that they have purchased, raised money for and purchased, and drop it. So we will have to look at the language, but I can certainly appreciate what you're saying.
And I think that that's why kind of it fits under that STEM umbrella, where we already have existing programs. It's not something new that we're bringing in, and I, stranger things have happened, obviously, but I can't imagine that somebody who, regardless of who's sitting at this table or in any office.
I can't either, but.
Right, but you're, nobody's gonna come in and say, nope, we're not doing STEM anymore. You know, that's the way that.
And I think about the fairs when they supported the building of the pro, of the high school here. There is a room designed for this. That's part of the vision of the school.
Was there a financial commitment on our end?
There is for the curriculum. It's $13,000 a year, and we're looking to do that through grant work, because it's directly related to students. It would come through Title IV, Effective Use of Technology.
Some of it would, Kathleen, but the vendor itself is also opening to partnering with us and researching grants for us to continue the project. They're gonna handle the rallying of donations and initial startup calls for this project, so in essence, the first plane that is purchased will be on their dime. It's up to us to complete the plane and secure the projects for future students.
Awesome. And I will say, I have already just received today, and again, did not even print it, a full timeline between now, January, to the start of the project in September 2025. Every single month is laid out with what we need to do and what needs to be accomplished. And that's not just Farmington itself. This is working with Tango Flight and also with the Aviation Museum, since they have done this before.
Is there any other discussion?
All those in favor?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Our state.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's exciting.
Our community.
It's not getting little kids involved, because if you got, you know, somebody that's a seventh grader who will follow this program right straight through his graduation.
It adds a whole nother element to what is offered.
Oh, yeah. And I mean, just meeting with, the day that we met with the folks that, they came out, opened my eyes to other, you know, because initially I just looked at it as we're building a plane, but then it's, it just draws in, it's, you know, opens that, do you want to be a flight attendant? Do you want to be, you know, it's just all of these moving parts.
Ancillary areas.
Kind of roped.
But even in terms of art design, things have to be ergonomically designed within the cockpit, so in a space, you can achieve what you need to do. So it's gonna draw in a lot of different elements.
Yeah.
That's physics.
Right, it's just.
Geometry.
There's even like a fun, a fun media component to be had here, you know. I mean, there's so many.
Hopefully they'll keep a running video of it.
That was another piece doing, setting up, maybe doing a time lapse.
Yeah.
Yes.
The plane building project.
It would involve the media group.
Very.
Farmington rec, you're up.
You can blame Stacy for putting it in that or. Or Sharon.
We start small.
But equally, yes. So we're just kind of circling back. We'd come to you guys a few months ago about busing the rec kids from Valley View to the rect of apartment after school for these cold months. We have been working with Gil. They are staffed. We've done a couple, we've, we've done it a couple of times to kind of figure out the mechanics and see how all the pieces fit. We've made a few changes, and I think at this point, we are ready to ask you guys to support that. It generally, generally looks like either Gil or Kim, they're coming to the rec to pick us up, so that we obviously have staff. We go to the school, we get our kids. They bring us back to the rec and are back at the school in time for their bus routes, so it's not affecting any of their bus routes. Sometimes when there's a sports event or a field trip or something, you know, we have to communicate with Gil and make sure that timing-wise still works. If it doesn't, obviously, we are, you know, in full understanding that school and school commitments come before rec. So if we have to adjust there, we can. So. Any questions or?
The trial runs have gone smoothly.
Yep.
Great.
We did have, like I said, that one day that we closed school early for that rainstorm. We went and got our kids, you know, with the timing and whatnot, where it was set, like quick turnaround time, we knew that they didn't have time, so that, you know what I mean? So we know that, obviously, sometimes we have to adjust there when is needed. So, and that's, you know, we communicate with Gil daily, say, you know, are we good? Yeah, we have the sport schedule so that we can be prepared ahead of time, that we know, you know, when they might potentially not be available.
Gil, did you have anything you wanted?
You know, we work together, and then like we'll all say it's for the kids.
Absolutely.
Yes, there's gonna be times when we can't do it.
Yep.
And I'll let them, let them know ahead of time, so that's where they can work around and.
And then, so are we, once it gets warmer again, are they gonna be walking, or are we gonna see how it go, or?
Yeah, I mean, for us.
If it works, I don't want to.
For us, we're really concerned with those cold months. When it's nice out, we walk the kids. I would rather walk them. I mean, that's fresh air for them, exercise for them, exercise and fresh air for us. We let them play at the playground. It gets them active, so we have, we enjoy walking them when it's nice out. So we're really just concerned with, like I said, these cold months, kind of that, like November to March, end of March-ish. But. Cold weather.
Yeah.
Ish. But if it's nice out, we'd rather walk them.
Yeah.
It just makes sense as a rec department to be active.
Does anybody have, I mean.
I have a question. How do you, how do we tell parents that are in the outskirts? One point, we're in the two-mile radius for walkers. What do you tell a parent of a six-year-old that lives 1.9 miles out that they can't ride the bus? But if you have a student that lives across the street from the elementary school, would get on that bus and ride down to the rec department? I can tell you.
So even from the school, so it's a program, it'd be no different than a field trip.
Yeah.
Right?
I was thinking more along the lines of if I had a six-year-old that lived on Chestnut Hill or Elm Street or, or up near Route 11, and they're walkers. So we tell those, we tell those parents and students, your kid has to walk. I don't care what the temperature is. It can be 12 degrees. You, you are designated as a walker. And yet, we're here using school employees, school equipment, to take the kids a much shorter distance in a bus.
I get that.
I get what you're saying. Okay. I wasn't following it at first.
I'm sorry.
I thought you meant like they were dropping the kids off directly.
No. You get, no. Again, you get a kid that's 1.9 miles up in Central Street or whatever, and they can't ride this bus. But the kids going from our schools, which is quarter of a mile, half a mile, much less than that, get a ride down to a program that's not school affiliated. We have our own school affiliated after-school program, but they're getting, even if the, let's say the kid lived right across from the school, and, but he doesn't go home because mom and dad are at work, he, he can, he's here at the school getting a ride on the bus. But the kid that lives out on Elm Street has to walk.
Have to figure it out or walk.
So we either bus all to a certain age. We're using, we're using our vehicle, our employees. Do you still have a rec bus?
We do. Right now, it's, it's out of.
Okay. So if they had their own rec bus, or even if the, I'm, I, I know in the past, there's never been somebody that was licensed enough to do that. This is a, this is a town facility. It's, it's a town program, but the school employee, the school gas, the school thing, I, I'm, I would just have a problem with, with, with somebody inside that two-mile walking radius that's not entitled to the bus to get to a school function. They're not entitled to come to school, but we have kids that are getting on a bus that are entitled to go to a town project. Are there any town employees that could do? I mean, I don't think we'd have a problem if the vehicle was available to do it, but again.
I will say, so we have been working with, with the town administrator and the highway department, and we've spoken to Gil too about us getting our licenses and being able to do it. And we're also actually looking at some grants and some other stuff for maybe getting a better vehicle that we could then also use. So we are having those conversations right now. I do understand it doesn't obviously help right this minute with the situation, but our end game and our goal would be that we are licensed and we have our CDL and our passenger endorsement, so that we can, you know, do that.
It'll be a lot easier too, right? A lot less planning.
Yeah. We're also looking, like I said, at other vehicles, you know, we're looking at the two we have, how much work do they need versus, you know, is it worth putting in? Is it worth buying a new one? You know, kind of all of those things. We were starting those conversations, so that is something that we're definitely looking at moving towards as we're capable.
What have you done in the past in your tenure? Do you have a van that was working and now it's not?
So, well, the van is only very recently. There's something last, I think it was just last week, went on it, and they're, they have it at the garage they're looking at. The problem is it only holds 13, well, 13, has 13-seat belts, which can't, depending on, not everybody is the same size. It is made for very small seats. So we can only get between 12 and 13 kids on that van at a time. So we have to come up to the school, get as many as we can, bring them back to the rec, which means we have to, we need a staff person at the rec, a staff person to drive, and a staff person at the school. And then we have to go back and get them, and then that makes us late picking up the kids from Henry Wilson, because that's another trip. So it just, I mean, the way we're staffed, it's really hard to find somebody to, to work from like 1:30 to 3:30, or, you know what I mean? Like it's, it's. Artillery the whole time. Right. It's hard to find somebody to fill a position that is such small hours.
The program is grown so that we can accommodate the need for the community. So as it's growing, we don't want to turn anybody away, but unfortunately, we have to until our warmer months, but some families need it now. Those children that might be in that radius that don't want to walk could potentially join our program and come to the rec. One, they would get our program out of it, and a safe way to kind of enter the winter months.
Does anybody, I don't know when this stopped, but at one point, we were bussing kids from our schools to the daycare in town. So that would kind of be.
Because it's beyond the radius.
The daycare.
And I believe, even though, even though the state says two miles. I believe Farmington has always practiced one and a half.
I guess I was just bringing up.
Has practiced what? Can you repeat that?
One and a half, one radius.
As past practice, that we have bussed kids to.
Unless that changed at some point, we weren't told, but.
A facility that wasn't.
I just.
The school. I don't know what that entailed, or how it happened, or why it stopped, but I, it just reminded me that we have done it, I guess, in the past. I don't know.
I'm, I'm, I love the program. I mean, I have absolutely nothing against that. I just am wondering if we're bending the rules for students getting on the bus for one activity when that same, you know, a classmate.
With another same access.
Yeah, because of the limit. They live 1.4.
Or maybe they have to walk to their daycare provider that's 1.2 miles from here.
Well, the kid gets up in the morning, his, he's either gotta walk 1.4 miles to get to school, or have a parent or somebody drop them off, because they're not entitled to use the school district bus. But on the other hand, we have children that are headed to a town program, riding the bus that this six-year-old has to walk in 12-degree weather, but this six-year-old doesn't, and it's not 1.4 miles. My only concern is that we'd be fair to everybody in the, in the usage. I don't, I don't, I wouldn't want a six-year-old walking in any kind of weather, but.
No, yeah, I agree with that.
But we've brought it. I guarantee you, there are some. I was one of them.
I mean, I guess if we're having those convers, is this a Band-Aid? I guess, is this a, or maybe a Band-Aid?
Bridge.
Bridge. Until, I guess, if, in past winters, if you've transported them yourself, do we go back to that once we have a solution? I guess that would probably be, I mean, that would be beneficial to you. I mean, that would be beneficial to you. I mean, that would be easier for you, obviously. I don't, does anybody have any?
How many kids are currently?
Right now at Valley View, we have twenty? Twenty? One and we have? We do have a parent who has reached out that's looking to place two more in our program, so we'd be at twenty-three when she does that from Valley View. And then? Five at Henry Wilson, but? And Henry Wilson is less? We can throw all them on the van.
Right, so? So you have to do two trips for Valley View?
Yes.
Anyway.
Right.
Yeah, when we take our.
But when?
Are they using a big bus? Right now? Are you, you're using big bus? I had not thought of Mary's.
Probably because.
I want to throw out another scenario. So Gil, and if you answer me, please get closer to the mic, so people at home can hear you, Gil, sorry. But, so if? If? We're scheduled to bring rec kids down to the rec? And we have an athletic trip that has to leave? Before the end of school or right around the end of school, you would be typically, that's you, I believe, that drives it?
This point it's Kim and myself.
And you can't take the rec? Then what's the plan? To just walk?
Then, well, then we would? Either if our van is not working, then yeah, I mean, we would have to. If the van is working, then we just make those multiple trips.
But it's not, so.
He's been giving us the schedule in advance, so we know when the two fifteen leave time is and we know that? We may not, we've discussed it, like, well?
Well, I'm just wondering what your, what the alternative was. I mean, it doesn't sound like you have a van right now, but? When you do have one.
That's not expected.
Right now, it's not affecting us? Too much. Cause Kim does her bulk run, gets out plenty of time to take them? Back and forth and when I'm not driving, the same thing. I've got two part-time drivers that take the route. And as soon as our, the driver gets ready, there'll be another one. My whole point is, it is our kids. And yes, I understand about the? I don't like it? About the radius? If we had a few more vans, a few more people picking up? Kids during the wintertime? It'd be great, but we don't have it. But these kids here are in a program that? The town has put together with? The rec department. And it's like a sports game. We transport our kids? In sport. We transport? Port them to activities? You know, field trips and stuff. This is something? It's our kids.
Which is, and, and again, I'm, I'm not trying to be argumentative. It's our kids in a specific group. But there are a hundred other kids that are not entitled? To come to school on a bus. They either have to walk or they have to have someone bring them.
Well, these kids are not coming in the morning, they're going in the afternoon. They're not being bussed in the morning.
That's, yeah, that's exactly what I'm saying. They're not being bussed.
But they're on, they're in a program set up? I guess by the town or whatever. It's a program. It's the difference. I know it's really isn't? What everyone would like it to be. You know, maybe the school should set up something here.
We have something here and it's about.
You know, I have the rec club come over here and they don't go anywhere. They stay here.
Yeah, I mean, there is a difference though. I mean, let's, we call a spade a spade. Field trips? Boarding events, our programs. Rec, not our program. I mean, sorry, let's call it a spade a spade.
Oh, who set up the program?
We can't? The town has.
Okay.
But not, but not the school guild. Let's not confuse, there are school programs separate from town programs, so I don't want to get those confused. I, they're beneficial. Not arguing that they're not beneficial. But they're not school programs, so we can't, it is apples and oranges and we have to decide whether or not we want to support? Apples and?
It's, to me, it's only going to be for a few months. As soon as the cold gets and then we'll be walking or their van gets fixed. We also have the availability, availability of a fourteen passenger van? That? We could probably allow them to use it. Soon as the? Row is done and all that, but some of them get out early, so? At this point? There is valid arguments both ways.
Want to be worked during the winter months, like putting a survey out to see? How many Valley View students there are?
That, that, that.
You're like, no way.
Uh, it's me, I'm over here going, oh boy.
Yeah, we can't? We're not, we're barely squeaking by with the ones that are outside of the one point five. So if we would say, okay, we may have another sixty or seventy kids, let's say eighty kids.
Are there eighty walkers?
What if you? No, parents bring them in. It's mostly your?
Right, I'm just talking about your little guys that are walkers. During the cold winter month.
Might see one or two with, with an older sibling? Walking up.
I'm just curious, how many were actual walkers?
So the? Again, I'm, I'm gonna twist it back around. The reason? Kids? Are bussed from our schools to our rec department is because of the weather. Is the weather different for somebody that lives one point four miles out? No, it isn't. If I'm the parent of? And I'm the one that has to get up early or, or hire somebody to drive my kid to school in the morning, because I don't want them walking? In twelve degree weather? If I'm the parent of that kid, then I want to know why? Other kids are being put on a bus in twelve degree weather and taken to a town program. That's all I'm saying. We're, we need to take care of all, all kids, all parents. My motion, I guess, would be either we get another sixteen buses and? Bus every kid in school. If you've got eighty walkers within that radius, that's a bus. We don't have it.
That's why I said, can we put it out there just out of curiosity? I'm not trying to open up a can of worms, but I? Like, do we really think that, because we're talking about the little guys, we're talking about Valley View. Do we really think that there are eighty? Walkers at Valley View? She's shaking her head now. Okay, right. That's what I, that's what I'm saying. So if we want to look out for all of our little kids? Mary, like, I'm just wondering if that's something that, like, we would be able to handle. And I'm not saying it has to be like a decision right now that? We have to mess up the bus route, but I'm just during the winter months, like, it's something for us to think about, that's all. Like? For your kindergarten, first, second, third graders? You know? There was the point that you were bringing up saying like?
I said, I just? I? My only? Rec program has always been one of my favorite things in town. Ever since I was teeny weeny, but? As I grew a little bit older, I, I, I firmly believe that? We are as responsible to all the taxpayers as we are. You know, if, if my kid walks in from one point four miles and a kid that? Lives within side of the school gets put on a bus that? Tell me how it's fair.
Does it matter that? So, well, and I, I would have to look because I? Didn't look at. So the addresses of the kids that we have, I mean, none of, they, they don't live on Main Street. But they're coming to our program because their parents are not home. They can't. So? A couple of our kids would be busters and are busters in the morning. But they don't have the availability to go home after school because? There's not a parent home, which is the need for the after school part.
Yeah, I mean, I, I kind of thought that? As well.
Not that it would be all of?
No, it wouldn't be all of them. And I guess? It's not my counterargument. I don't, I'm thinking a counterargument to that would be? There are people that don't send their kids to rec, but also can't, like, can't? Be home to receive their kids, so they make? They set them up with like a babysitter within walking, and so they walk home and drive in the morning. I guess that would be that counterargument. I mean, I guess? At this point? I don't? I don't know if it makes sense to send out something during the, or during the colder months or days. But do, or do we make that, anybody that wants to? Get a bus ride to the rec? You could pick up your kid there. I don't know. I, I don't know if that's a? Help anybody idea, I don't know.
It's just gonna be a bu- a bunch more trips from?
Also for me? And, and maybe this? Maybe this isn't the right place for this or whatever for this conversation, but? I, like? And I don't know how, like I said, I don't know how all the workings go with, with boards in, in town or school and whatever, but? I guess for me? Yes, it's not a school program, but at some point? Can we not bridge between the school and the town working together to provide these services and to? Provide these things for kids? I understand it's not a school program, that it is a town program, and so that's not the school's responsibility, but? I mean, at some point? Is there a way, and like I said, maybe this isn't the avenue for that or the conversation for that, but? To bridge the school and the town working together to provide these things for all of our kids?
Well, I, I think the school does that quite often. Look at the five hundred Boys and Girls Club. They use that facility year round.
Oh, absolutely. And I, and we're using the rec this year too. And I, like, and, but that's the thing, I think those things are great where we're all kind of working together? As one? And so, you know?
I, I get it. I just, you know, Mary's argument is, and this is how I've interpreted it, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, is? Until we can figure out a way to provide that same type of service? To any kid? Of that age who has to walk? Why would we necessarily provide it? To a town program that does have a van that's being looked at, that can do it. It's just not the ideal.
And they have town employees with CDLs.
That's not the ideal situation, but? I mean, I don't know.
I'm not trying to break the town from the school. We've always worked well together and whatever, but I?
No, I see your point. I think we all see your point, Mary.
Have you guys gone to the board of selectmen and say that you have this issue and have they?
Yes, and they directed us to come to the school and see if we could work out a bugging solution, so that's? That's where this came from, from what I was told and again, I don't even know if it's true and I have no? This, the school did used to bring the rec kids to the rec department? For after school program. That's what I was told. You've been on the board a very long time. I don't know if, I, I don't know, I would.
I mean, I worked for the rec and I don't ever remember that. My sister.
How long is the walk from?
Yeah.
How long is the walk? From Valley View to the rec? Minute wise, roughly.
With the kids? Yeah, it's, it's about a half hour walk.
How long's recess? Has recess been canceled yet this year? Part of me would be inclined to support it more when recess is canceled.
Temperature.
I mean, I think that's an indication of we don't think it's safe enough for kids to be outside for a thirty minute period. So if we could help a group of kids get to where they're going to be? And it's going to take them thirty minutes to get there, I'd be more inclined to help on those days.
What's the temperature threshold? Has it changed?
Twenty-five.
Right, except feel like, right? If you're like fifteen?
And the reason I say that is because our buses, and maybe this has changed, Gil? I've seen buses stop on School Street in front of my house and pick up kids on the way to school that were walking that were not busses. Because it was too cold. Did they still practice that?
My drivers have the instructions. Pick up anybody? That if it's really extremely cold, pick them up. Even if they're just a half a block away, pick them up. Warm them up. And they're sitting in the bus? When we're parked before the school opens the doors? At seven thirty, there's a lot of kids there that are standing in front of the door. And our drivers, my drivers go ahead and open the door for them. I've, when I worked for? Before as a driver for Farmington, I used to do that too. See a kid walking? In the snow, cold? Get in.
Was that a motion?
Wasn't a motion. I, I mean, if you want it to be, I could certainly.
Well, I just, I, I, I guess I don't, I mean, I agree with that.
Like, they just need a, we need a solution. Like, you guys need to answer one way or the other, just so you know what you're doing.
Continue it until, until?
If it's a bridge, Band-Aid, whatever you want to, if we can get like a time estimate?
But even if they get the bus fixed, they don't have? The driver.
Well, no, but they can drive vans, I thought.
The van holds thirteen, we can drive.
They can drive their vans, because they're not, they're not fifteen, I think it's fifteen.
Yeah, anything over fourteen, the driver.
I'm sorry. It was an unpopular thing, but?
Like during the cold month and cold weather and?
So if you cancel recess, does the child that's a mile and a half out? Not have to come to school? He still has to walk to school and then find out recess is canceled.
And he's carrying his big bag of stuff.
I guess the, the, any given day? If it's too cold or it's? It's snowing, but we haven't canceled. It's, it is the parents' right and discretion to say? I'm gonna keep my kid home today. I don't, I don't feel it's safe for them to go. Or I think it's too cold for them to go, or whatever the situation is. That is the parents' right.
Or it's too hot.
Or, right, or too hot, whatever that is.
I get three day suspension because I wore slacks? To school when it was twenty-eight below zero. I had my skirt, my backpack? Or my bookbag? And I didn't get there in time to change. So I went to homeroom with slacks. I got sent to the principal's office? And I got three day suspension? At twenty-four degrees below zero.
And she's still holding on to that? And she is not bitter.
It's ever colder to her than?
Yeah, well.
And she walked both ways.
Twenty twenty, we've gone, we don't make kids like that anymore. At least I don't.
All right, so what do we? Do we need a consensus? Do we need a motion? What do?
I'm all about, my earring fell out. How do you like that, all you viewers at home? I just want to support all kids and do what's right for all kids.
I would really like actual numbers, like you guys gave us actual numbers, but how many actual kids are we not able to? Bus?
No, I didn't think to open up that can of worms.
That actually like aren't part of the rec department, but are down at the playground playing with us as a rec department. Like, we're like, yeah, we have a, a couple, but? It's like one of those, like, we're not gonna say like, oh, you're not part of the rec department, you can't, you can't play with us.
The weather, I worry about them getting kidnapped on the way to school, like, how did their parents know they actually got to school? Especially since we don't always get the robo-call.
The bags, watching the little ones with the bags, trying to carry everything.
Even like as an educator, so? I didn't mean to?
No, I mean?
I drove down Bay Road the other day. There were two young kids walking up towards? Waldron Road? From school. That's, I know, because I go by my house every day. That's a long walk and it was cold out.
With no sidewalk.
It was cold. It was cold.
I'm sorry, I do not mean to debolega, but should have been a fairly easy discussion, I, I have to be a little more global, I guess.
Does this? Do we wanna go ahead and? Say this is a temporary solution until we get a better idea on your vans? And do we wanna do our due diligence and see how many families we can accommodate at Valley View?
Yeah.
If there is a need?
Yeah, I'd like to know if there's a need.
I think the need is there, but what's happened is.
Right.
And again, it's twenty-twenty-four, you're right.
We might not have a solution for that need right now, but it may open the discussion.
Bring those kids. So, so the parents of the kids that are in the one point five. They have to make accommodations to get that child to school, that's, that's a given. Either they can't ride on the bus, they're not allowed. So the parents bring them, or an older sibling, or a neighbor, or, or a whatever, they get to school. I don't think out of the eighty, throw in a number, that you would find that all eighties are walking. What's happened is that the responsible parent in the family has had to find their own solution between that. But if you have a co- child in the rec program, you don't have to find a solution.
Be the first one to get into it, I'm just kidding.
I mean, it's probably a reason.
What, we use the van?
We, yeah, we've been using the van.
Yeah.
Um, it's, like I said, it came up really last year because when we're having to leave students at Valley View and go.
There wasn't anybody to watch.
Right, and, and how do we watch them, and, and so.
We're responsible.
We don't wanna be a burden on Valley View either, so. This year we limited.
Did you have how many people on staff, three?
It depends on the day, so like, like tomorrow, I'm leaving, I'm going up north for a three day conference, I'll be gone Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. If we didn't have Martha to come in. Then she can't drive and have, like, you know what I mean?
I try to be the one, it doesn't work.
Cause you have to have one at the rec, which is usually Kim Poole and goes down there, um, cause she gets out at the same time as us.
Yeah.
Um, so we can drop that load off, but then it doesn't leave anybody at Valley View. So then that's where we kinda have to figure out and maneuver. That, you know, however we're gonna, uh, we have been able to work it out, it, it does, I feel like it causes an issue. So, I mean, and now, like she said, our numbers are starting to grow, so we're starting to get the need. We have this parent, like I said, who has reached out, who has two children that she wants to put in the program, but right now.
We either have to deny her.
We gotta figure out how to.
Or.
Get everybody there. So I think it's that, the need is growing, is where it's now becoming.
And we're not just putting it on you guys, we're looking to you guys for, you know, help at the moment as we try to navigate this for the future. To accommodate more kids for the future regardless.
Like, my goal would be that by next September, one or both of us has our C P L, and we have.
A vehicle that can accommodate.
That's kind of the goal there, but, so we're not looking for a long term commitment, you know, ongoing forever kind of thing. Um, we're just trying to see what the options are to better our program.
Cause if the need's there, we just now have to tie it all in and figure out how to make it all work for everybody.
I mean, I would be okay with it on a temporary basis. Because they are our kids, because we are not.
I mean, money out, but in the other.
Right, yeah, it's.
Is that a motion?
It can be.
You know what, I'll, I'll take this.
We have five, I don't fucking see, don't take advantage of the bus, I will bus five kids down to the rec every day for you.
No, I, as.
Cause we drive them.
As a temporary service. They are our kids. I am hi- we have always had and tried to work with the town in any way we can, I would like to think that that is reciprocated. As. We aren't being overly burdened by it for Gil. On days that we are, you've made accommodations, it is not a forever thing. Until we can get a better idea of when. Your chariot will be ready and able. I will make that motion on a temporary basis, I guess, I, I, yeah.
How about if we make the motion through February vac- till the beginning of February vacation? We, then we revisit it. At that point, it should be warmer.
Yep, or maybe have an idea of.
What?
Well, the days are longer, the days are longer.
Or have an idea of how long and.
And that way. There's a, there's a checkpoint, this is where we wanna know how the van is, we wanna know what the numbers are, that type of thing, I, I would support that, so can you make that?
And I'll revisit the March fourth.
Is that a friendly amendment?
That's a friendly amendment, and I will second that if you.
And to revisit on March, on a March fourth meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah. Any further discussion? Dare I ask?
I'm done, I'm done, I just.
All those in favor?
It.
Can we go two more minutes?
Nah.
I.
We haven't been an hour on this.
Jess, Mary, oh, you did.
Yeah, I did.
Mary?
I'm fine.
Viewers at home, Tarsha, Tarsha, I know you're listening, thank you, I love my earrings too.
I just.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you, Gil.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Gil.
Thanks, Gil.
See ya.
All right. Well done. Um.
Oh, we're still not done with them.
I know.
Well, I, at this point. Madam Chair, could we consider jumping down two Warren articles?
We can, yes, I was just looking at what we could shuffle, so.
Yeah, I mean, if we have to meet next Monday to, to complete the rest of these, because.
That's what I suggested today.
Yeah.
Probably the most.
Yes.
Important thing that needs to be completed tonight is, I'm sorry.
Agreed, no.
Can we take a five minute recess between now and then?
Yeah.
That'd be nice.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Call for a five minute reset, recess, I was a little tired. And, uh.
Couple people are gonna be driving me off the road.
Thank you, everyone, we are back, and we are going to be moving. Ahead from un- um.
I should have moved the, uh, Warren articles up on the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, Warren articles, back to Mac.
Okay, so I submitted the updated draft, um, with the attorney, the attorney's edits to some of the language. Um, to your board folder, if you guys wanna bring that up, I'm, I'm assuming we'll just wanna work live, get it done, and move on. And this.
This is the word, document?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and you can open it in Google if you want it to be live and we can watch it happen, but.
Yes.
I'm just opening up. Okay.
And one thing that we'll have to discuss, I think after we make sure we agree with Article One and Two, is the grants portion of Article Three. So there's another explanation of that once we get down there. I don't know how you want to placate it, but.
Um, I mean, One and Two are pretty much.
Pretty standard. Just sign off on it if you please, or I haven't actually seen like the board vote on the warrant articles yet. Do you vote on individual warrant articles, Mary, or do you vote on them as a whole?
We, individual.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Well, do we usually put a vote on one, the non-monetary ones? Or like.
Non-monetary, you don't have to, but.
Right, I don't, I couldn't remember how we've done like One and Two are always.
It's not required, but for consistency throughout the entire warrant, you know, it's just.
Yeah.
Because somebody's gonna say, well, why isn't it on Article One?
Right.
And you say, well, because we don't have to. Hmm, I don't know.
Yeah.
But anyway, it's.
All right.
It's not required.
Um, so motion to accept Article One as written? Second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion to.
Hold on. No, I did have one question. Could you double-check with the school clerk, because I really felt like moderator, school moderator was annual.
General, yeah, that's something I've generally heard is annual, but it wasn't.
I mean, I could look it up, but.
I took the warrant from last year, though. So this was a, like, I don't know if I deleted one or not. Let me.
I think it was on last year's.
Yeah, let me take a look. I can find out really quick.
I almost think he has to be on every year, which is kind of basically announcing that the position is available.
Hmm. Unless is it on the, is it on the town warrant, though?
Uh-uh.
No?
Well, if he's going to.
It is a one-year term.
So.
The clerk was a one-year term. The treasurer was a one-year term last year.
Did you say treasurer or clerk? Oh, you said moderator.
I said moderator.
So this was last year's warrant, to choose the following district officials, board members, two three-year terms, moderator, one, one-year term, one, one-year term treasurer, clerk, one-year term, one.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so those have to go back on there.
Okay.
I do believe so. I'm sorry to interrupt, but.
No, no, that's why we're here.
Great question. Count them down.
Fifty-nine and, yeah.
Three and three-quarters. I could, never mind.
I'm serious, though. Don't call away. Um.
Is the treasurer always a one-year term?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, and then Article Three.
Nope, Two.
No.
Sorry. Go ahead.
I'll go on to Article One.
Yeah, oh, that's correct.
Yes, I updated it.
Okay. Wait, I'm in Google Docs. How come it's not showing live?
Hmm, it should. Sometimes there's a little blip.
Really?
But I, yeah, it says it's saving, save to drive. Let me share this version with you.
It's fine. I mean, I agree with you. It's, no, it's good. I'll go back there.
You sure?
Yeah, I rechecked it, so it's not working.
Yeah, why not? Hold on.
Is everyone else's?
It's easier, it's easier if we can see it live, for those who can appreciate that.
I just opened it, but I can't blow it up, so that's all right. I'll be fine. So those will have to be added and we should take a vote that we approve them as amended, per se. They'll be on the copy that goes.
To the lawyer.
To the, well, yeah, to him, but also to the budget committee on Wednesday.
Also correct, yeah.
Okay, so Article One, one three-year term school board, one three-year term moderator.
No, that's from the school bar. I'm just erasing that now. Nope, you're fine.
One, one-year term moderator, one, one-year term treasurer.
Clerk, treasurer. Yep, just fixing the formatting here.
Um, motion to accept as amended.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I was gonna be lonesome.
Motion took place as written.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Article Three.
Article Three, your, this is for your operating budget. There is a proposed portion, a default portion. Both portions are including all three funds at this point in this article, and those are the funds that we raised through taxation. So Fund Twenty-One is our food service fund, and is commonly the amount of the food service contract, which I've listed there for this year, and that was the one approved by the DOE. Fund Twenty-Two, which is your grants fund, and just for the audience, grants, the grants fund is a fund that is not, is reimbursed to us from the federal government, so it does not result in additional taxation, but is in this case included in that amount as I chose to follow the formatting of last year. Tidbit on this, Mary reached out and floated the idea of separating the grants to a separate warrant article to capture the whole appropriation. If we put the total number of what we can appropriate for grants on there, the total's over seven million dollars, so it's gonna inflate that budget number like through the roof, but I'll let Mary speak to that.
I was only interested in putting, this time last year, we had directed the superintendent to appropriate everything allotted that hadn't already been budgeted. That was not done. So we have approximately 1.8, yeah, that is still, but the reason that one is to be moved faster to the top, if you will, is because I believe that if we move S R Three, that dollar amount, to warrant article, when that warrant article passes, we can begin spending immediately. Otherwise, if it's left incorporated in Article Three, we can't spend until one July. So we've, that would buy us an extra ninety days.
Right, yeah.
Otherwise, then you've got July, August, and part of September to spend almost two million dollars.
Yeah, yeah, it says the total allocation that we have left, so this is like unapproved money that hasn't been, hasn't been budgeted, hasn't been submitted to the DOE, is one million, three hundred and fifty thousand, five hundred and sixty-five dollars and forty-four cents.
Yeah. I mean, if you leave it where it is now, we would have to be able to spend that within the ninety-day timeframe, 1.3 million. It kind of ties into his discussion about S R. What are we, what are we gonna buy? Are we buying buses? Because there's, we don't want to leave, once again, leave anything on the table, but.
So, did we move it, so, sorry, just to clarify, did we move that, those grant funds to another article, or we just put it as the note in this article?
Well, that's Mary's point is.
Right now, it's in, it's incorporated within the 2.5 expenditure. Yeah, yeah, it talks about.
Good.
Fund Twenty-Two, 2.5 expenditures from federal special revenues. So.
Does it, I don't, I mean, it doesn't matter, I guess, if, if we did another article with the grant monies.
With just S R.
With, just, sorry, just S R. If it failed, but it, be all right. And we're not appropriating the money. It, it wouldn't come at a, you know, it's not gonna increase the tax bill, but seeing that number may, I can't, I can't see it being defeated, but if it did, what, we wouldn't.
We wouldn't get it.
Right.
You are correct. But what we're doing is asking to be allowed to receive 1.3.
Right. Now, what if, in the, what if we clarified in Article Three, instead of not adding it, because I don't want to, I would have a hard time seeing that number. If, how you have that expenditures from federal special revenues in parentheses.
It would look pretty much like that. It would, I'd strip out that language and.
Right. Would it make sense and get the same end result if we put 122 equals 2.5 blah blah blah, of which 1.3 comes from S R? Or?
You can explain it that way, but the difference is.
If they approved that article, that spending starts July first. If we approve a warrant article, it's immediate.
If we leave it in, yeah, if we leave it in Article Three as, as part of the 2.5, and it gets approved, which, you know, the budget's gonna be approved, but.
Right.
Because it was part and parcel to Three, Three doesn't kick in until July first. If we pulled the S R money out and put it as a warrant article, and it passes, we can start spending after the recount period.
Right.
Which is third week in March. It just buys us some more time. And the other thing that came to mind today was because nine twenty, September thirtieth of twenty-four is the end, everybody's gonna be inundating that portal.
Right, right.
With it. It's just gonna be, and, and your chances, you know, for, for positioning us to be able to, you know, submit this this week, submit that that week, and, and remain steady as opposed to the giant at the end when everybody else is scrambling as well. Just a thought.
I think that, I'm fine with.
I'm okay with either, yeah.
I mean.
If you think, if, I mean, if you think you can spend all of that between July first and the middle of September, then it's, it's already there, but.
Right, and I mean, I guess that it would buy more time if it was separate.
I can start sooner. Projects don't.
Right.
The project, so part of the, the rigmarole here is the project has to be done by nine thirty.
Right.
So if it's a service that, yeah, stuff like that, for bigger projects is gonna save us.
So if we could start it in March?
Yeah, following that recount period. It just, we can, what we can do is we can turn this weekly S R meeting into a planning meeting, get all of our narratives ready, get everything ready to go, bring it all to the board, get it pre-approved, you know, and then following that vote, we'll put it in. Well, recount period.
Right, well, I think that makes sense then to deal with that one.
But Article, that's going to change the.
Amount in Article Three.
Yeah, yeah, it'll change two numbers in Article Three, the proposed budget and the dollar amount coming out of that, and then you drop it down to a different article, and that's all well and good, but that has, this is also going to be presented on Wednesday night.
Right.
So, I mean, that's just a matter of doing it. And double-checking with Eric to make sure I'm right that we can spend immediately after recount. That's what I recall, but.
Yeah, and I'm, and I'm happy to go that method and get an answer from Eric. I'll be on, I'll be on this with him tomorrow morning, so.
Okay. Let me just, do we want that as a motion, or are we a consensus? Anybody have? Can it just be a consensus, or should we vote on it and make a motion?
I think if we're going to motion each one of them, that we would definitely.
Do you guys want to keep Article Three as written minus S R, and move S R to Article Four, and then bump the rest down by one?
Yeah.
How, is that easiest?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, well.
To edit?
I've, I've got two thoughts in my head, sorry. I will make a motion to approve Article Three as written, minus the dollar amount of 122, I mean, sorry, not 122.
S R.
S R, which will be moved to Article Four.
Mm-hmm. Second.
And we're gonna verify with people.
Yes.
Um, any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
I, um, my second thought is the number in Article Three for the, um, proposed budget, the number, what nu, what, is that the number that, when we brought it to the budget committee, was the different number?
But.
Uh, that is not the exact number, although it does consti, that number is in that number.
Okay.
Yes, so the sixteen, four, eight, three, three, five, five is that number, and that is part of the nineteen, five, forty-nine, nine, fifty-seven.
Stacy, look down a little further where it starts with note, Fund Ten.
Right, that's where I'm getting at.
Okay.
Yeah.
Correct.
So, do we need, can we make a motion now to, or does it not matter with what we put forward to Budget Committee? Can we change that at this point, or does it?
We can change it now, but we cannot change it after Wednesday night.
Right, and I just, I want us to all be on the same page of what number, what, what number is going in on the warrant, that we're all on the same page. Because what was it, a difference of two-hundred-ish thousand? Is that what it was?
Two-hundred thousand.
One thirty-eight.
Yeah, the sixteen, four, eighty-three, three, fifty-five followed a conversation where we agreed that the number would be suitable to finance everything.
Right.
Um, there was talk about adding another eighty thousand in for non-union raises, but we only used forty thousand of that line the year prior, so it went against the, if, the, the, the point of it, which was starting from what was actually used and building on it from there. So that was one of the things that escaped it, but the number constitutes what we need to, to employ, who we need to employ, and, and get those positions back in the, in the operating budget, so.
But one recent comment of like, that's fine, let's make it happen.
Right.
Like that, or.
Right. That was.
Essentially, that's how I took it, was.
Right.
Plus, you have to at least have this number, although we could go up to.
Right. Because some of those numbers that night, when he was up there representing, we didn't even have accurate numbers. It was estimated.
Yeah, that's correct. I don't think the, like, the insurance number, I think we threw out a number really quick, and I don't think that was like the year-over-year number.
Right.
I think it was like two-hundred grand bumped on it, all of that, and I, I, I just don't think it was.
The other thing, you, we started with what was actually spent.
Right.
Now, what was actually spent was only forty thousand.
Forty-nine, yeah.
No, forty thousand of that.
Sorry, yes.
Line item for that.
Right.
So we needed to keep, if we wanted to get it back up to eighty, which is what we wanted to have available for non-unions, but we only spent forty last year, we needed to add at least forty.
Right.
To get it back up, not to, we spent forty, and that was that fourteen, seven, seventy-seven. Part of that was forty thousand that was given to raises, but the board said we want to have a budget line with eighty thousand in it, so there needed to be a line, which was part of that difference in the numbers, needed to be a line that had at least forty grand in it.
Yeah, the, the line has eighty thousand.
Okay.
So it didn't need another eighty thousand, so, but was my point.
Okay, got it. All right, so. I don't have, I could.
Okay.
Tell you what the new appropriation would be, but I don't have the, well, maybe I can.
I can.
So we've got the appropriation of one, nine, five, forty-nine, nine, fifty-seven. And what is the S R?
One, three, five, zero, five, six, five, four, four.
Okay, eighteen, one ninety-nine, three ninety-one, sixty.
Eighteen, one nine nine, three nine one, point six zero.
Yeah.
And Mary, could you do that same calculation for the default portion?
Okay. I feel like we're in a spelling bee.
Can you use the calculation in an engineering equation, please?
Yes, please. I gotta, I gotta have a little technical assistance here.
If you go up to this three dots here.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
It's a drawdown, and you can increase it to whatever it works for you.
I can do budgets. So the default is, okay. One nine five seven zero fifty. One more time for ESSER.
You got it. It is one three five zero five six five point four four.
Eighteen two zero six four nine three point eight zero. And we are allowed to round.
I recommend rounding. The, the portal hates cents.
Well, no, absolutely, round up. Uh, well, round, round by your normal.
Okay.
Below, below fifty, drop it, above fifty.
More comfortable than rounding both up?
Yes.
Three nine two and four nine four. And if someone can check my math, I believe that makes the federal grants portion of the breakout on the bottom, one two one two three nine seven, I'm rounding up.
I didn't write any of it down.
Me neither.
Writing it in.
Yeah, I'm waiting.
Yeah, I'm going to write it in right now. And then I'm going to reconcile the whole thing.
We can vote Article Three pending, uh, numerical verification.
Yep.
We know what, we know what we want to get, so.
Right, exactly.
I added the new breakout together, and it adds to eighteen one nine nine three nine two, so that's good. And then just to double check the default, and then we'll let Eric have the final proofread. I am going to leave the cents in the default budget, just because that's how I gave it to them.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay. Eighteen two zero six four nine four point two.
Awesome.
Okay.
All right. And we already voted on Three, right Cheryl? Okay, and then.
Do you have a motion for the exact amount for the budget, so we have a dollar figure?
Well, that's what that just clarified. So we have to do the amended version, right? So motion to accept Article Three as amended with the proposed budget totaling eighteen one ninety-nine three ninety-two and the default eighteen two oh six four ninety-four and twenty-eight cents.
You also need to do a cash rate. Before we accept Three, we kind of have to figure enough to make a cash rate.
Right.
What is it, a dollar per thousand?
Well, no, uh, uh, that, that's how I.
Yeah.
Look it quickly at it. No, it's a dollar per five hundred and sixty-two thousand. But the, the formula is your appropriation less revenue and adequacy divided by assessment. I can't do that one on the chat.
Me neither.
Appropriation
Yeah.
Less revenue and adequacy divided by assessment.
And we should have that now, right?
Yeah, Becky did, we would have.
Mm-hmm.
And it's going to be slightly different than the town because the town has like power, electricity, they get. They get a little bit, but I'm pretty sure I did hear at a selectments meeting that they have the new evaluation, so that's going to those, that's the formula, that's the
Right.
down and dirty formula.
It's, um, like all, all's revenue, right? So like, whatever we're projecting, revenue.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Now, that makes sense.
And that's always just an estimate.
Right.
I mean, anything can change. You put it on here in writing, and then they change Article Three, it's going to, it's going to alter your, um, tax, estimated tax. That's why it says estimated.
Right, right.
But, okay.
Okay.
Now we can vote Three as amended.
Motion to approve Article Three as amended.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, Article Four will be ESSER. We can move back to that once you have it written. Um.
Probably just do the dollar amount.
Well, yeah, because it would just be to accept Article Four.
Okay.
As a right amount of.
Her attorney's advice, I guess, you know, because he's asking, that's a new one, he's going to have to check it.
Right, so. But we're, are, have we already accept, we've already accepted it? What, it wouldn't be?
Oh, yeah, you kind of did two and one.
I just don't know how, how it would be worded. Um.
I would, I guess I would put Article Four.
Shall the district incorporate?
Yeah. Pending.
Pending and pa, pending ESSER funds into our operating budget?
Yeah, um. Got to be raise and appropriate.
Well. Well.
To accept and appropriate.
To accept, okay.
Well, we're not.
Right, because we're not raising it.
We're not raising it, yeah.
The dollar amount of that, and, I mean, you can get as verbal as you want.
Right.
Which is the balance remaining of ESSER Three.
Right, right.
Grant.
To be used until nine twenty-four, I mean.
Available to us until September thirtieth of twenty twenty-four.
Mm-hmm.
And then again, it's, and for this motion, I would add pending legal
Yeah.
approval. And that gives, if Eric agrees with what we're doing here and why we're doing it, then, then you've got your approval.
Yep. All right, so motion to accept Article Four as written?
Nope.
No?
Four becomes five.
No, no, isn't that?
We already made.
To, to Article Four would be to accept the remaining appropriation from ESSER. To accept the remaining funds from ESSER and the amount of blank to appropriate and use.
Five, November thirtieth, pending legal.
Sure.
Right, pending.
Pending legal.
Yeah, that won't go into the.
Right, the pending.
No, 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 but that will be the most.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that's going to be the new Article Four.
Four, right.
The Four that we're looking at.
Well, no, he already moved it down. Sorry, that's why I said it.
Oh.
Yes.
Okay.
I know.
You did right, Cheryl. Mary, do you have your email there? We already moved it down to inside Article Four when we voted on it. You sent us the live version.
Right.
Yeah.
Now, okay, this is going to get weird, like, what's that movie Inception where there's like layers after layers?
Yeah.
Uh, if Eric disagrees, do we allow me to take Eric's advice, or do you meet again tomorrow?
Wouldn't the pending legal cover that question?
It does.
For, for Four it does, but what if I have to add it back into Three that you've already approved?
Well, we can amend Article Three to state.
At the hearing, maybe, or?
No, uh, well, yeah, you can, but I would just do the, the Farmington School Board's motion is to do Article Three that way pending legal approval.
Okay.
Yeah.
And if he says no, you can't.
Then we can just add it back.
Then what you had on there was the only way we can go.
Okay.
But I.
Yeah.
Just my thought, I don't know, trying to cover.
No, 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 no. We, because we're not going to probably be able to.
Right.
Call another one.
A friendly amendment to Article Three.
Yeah. All right, so Article Four motion to accept Article Four as written with legal pending legal advice which will potentially affect Article Three, should it be rejected. Ish.
We don't want to break the law, but we want to get this done.
Right.
Yeah.
Whatever that covers.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, Article Five.
No.
To see if the district will vote to approve the cost items included in the collective bargaining agreement reached between the Farmington School Board and the Farmington Education Support pair of, or professionals, uh, which calls for the following increases in salaries and benefits at the current staffing levels over the next three years. Um, twenty-four to twenty-five is forty-nine thousand seven hundred and thirty-five dollars and fifty-four cents. Uh, twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-six, eighty-one thousand six hundred and one and fifty-two cents. Twenty twenty-six to twenty twenty-seven is one hundred and thirteen thousand eighty-two dollars and fifty-nine cents, which brings the total over three years to two hundred and forty-four thousand four hundred and nineteen dollars and sixty-five cents. And to further raise and appropriate forty-nine thousand seven hundred and thirty-five dollars and fifty-four cents for the current fiscal year, such sum representing the additional costs attributable to the increase in salaries and benefits required by the new agreement over those that would be paid at current staffing levels.
May I ask, did this ever come to this board to be approved?
It has not. We have the agreement with the with the, um.
CBA.
Yes, sorry.
But can we put it on as a warrant article without official approval?
If we ratify.
Yeah, that's.
Beforehand?
That's the word, ratty, ratify. We have to ratify it.
I mean.
Because without legal ratification, we're asking them to do something that we never blessed.
We can ratify it once and then.
We can ratify it right now if we want, right?
We can, yeah. I mean, I don't have the.
Still looks.
Amended doc, I mean, I have the amended document, but. And we.
It's to me, it would be the same as if we put a warrant article on for some contract, like, I don't know, to paint every building, but the board hadn't approved it yet. How can the legislative body approve something that the board hasn't?
Did they ratify?
They approved. I just have to print and sign.
If this is exactly.
You must have what they, you must have that.
I have the, the, um, the draft.
Where's the one they tried?
Because it's more than just the numbers.
She just brought it back. They voted to approve.
Oh, okay, got it.
So the only thing, it just hasn't been signed.
We probably should just go into a negotiation then at some point and. And we could vote on this one after.
Yeah. We can do that.
You need to have a recorded phone.
Yep.
As of today's date.
We can do that.
Other than that, I like it.
All right.
So do we need a motion to table this, or we can just move on?
We can move on.
Okay.
We'll, yeah.
Right.
Article Six, shall the district, if warrant Article, wait, is this now warrant Article Five?
Yeah, within the body, yeah.
This is warrant Article Five, yeah.
No, no.
No.
The one we just did.
No, I've just moved on to Six.
Six.
In the, the wording.
It's referencing Article Four, I see it.
Yeah.
Referencing Article Five.
Yep.
Okay.
Perfect.
Go. Okay, so Article Six, shall the district, if warrant Article Five is defeated, authorize the governing body to call one special meeting at its option to address warrant Article Five cost-only items. Cost items only.
Well, she would approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Article Seven, shall the district vote to raise and appropriate?
Stacy, this is where we have to decide. I just did placeholders from the last time we voted on warrants, and these are the ones that they picked, but there is a bigger explanation on this. Um, I've uploaded to your board fo, board folders, a breakdown of the la, all the way back to fifteen of how boards have voted to use the end-of-year fund balances, including warrants. I've included the MS nine as well with current balances. Um, none are like, of like immediate concern to me, but I also am new here. So I don't have like a historical picture of what's been done, what we're saving for, when it's going to go and why.
Right.
Um, so I'm not a really useful asset here totally.
What I, what I ran by Mac, if I will, and share the rest of the board, was basically, at this point, we're halfway through the budget, so we should be able to come up with a conservative number of what your fund balance is going to be. So for conversational, let's say it's a million. Um, off that, we should make a decision on what we plan on turning back to the town, which is what this document tells you about. Keeping that as consistent as possible, because every year, the beginning of this year, we had an extra million in there for cash flow. So you go through the year, and at the end, you give the million back. And then you start all over again, and you need that million for cash flow. It's, it's really not raising anything to our taxpayers. It's the same money that's just rolling forward. So consistently, let's say we want to use the number nine hundred thousand. So now you've got you've got X amount of money that you're planning on giving, I mean, that's going to be your fund balance. And then we are going to subtract what we would anticipate giving back to the taxpayers. That's the first thing. The second one would be contingency fund. With the way the world is on a moment-by-moment basis, I feel it's a good idea to have that emergency fund.
Mm-hmm.
So that's the second number that we have to come up with. Once you start with your estimated conservative fund balance, take off what we would like to give back and take off any contingency, that's a dollar number that is now left. Then we prioritize the capital reserve funds and say the most important one is kitchen or whatever it may be. And now we have a dollar amount that we can apply to those warrant articles that are following in priority. If, um, for those that may or may not know, and those at home, warrant articles of that nature that come out of fund balance are taken, are approved in the order that they appear on the warrant. So if your most important one is the kitchen fund, but you put that down here somewhere, and they approve everything there, you run out of money, then you can't do that.
Mm-hmm.
So that, that's, that's how I would present it, so.
So Mary, I'll, I'll just jump off from there. So the document I put in is historicals for fund balance. Uh, it gives us averages dating back, so from two thousand fifteen to two thousand and twenty-three, the average amount sent back to the town to reduce taxes is seven hundred ninety-nine thousand three hundred and eleven dollars. Uh, the high points of that average are the two times that we've exceeded a million dollars. They seem like it doesn't happen every, you know, unless it's every so often. And then the extreme low was a hundred and seventy-three thousand. Uh, so it seems to be a fair average, where we're not seeing the extreme low or the extreme high too often. Uh, the fund balance that has been retained on average equals a hundred and sixteen thousand, somewhere around a hundred. Uh, and then the amount given back is, uh, excuse me, the amount sent through is warrants, uh, on average, dating back to fifteen, uh, one hundred and two thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Uh, it's somewhere around there, so another hundred thousand towards warrants every, every two years, or, you know, or every year or so, um, ends up coming out. It, it ends up coming out to be around there.
So do you have, do you have a conservative estimated fund? So do you have, do you have a conservative estimated fund balance?
Yeah, I'd have to agree with the average fund balance to reduce taxes here. I'd say my low es- my extreme conservative estimate would be half a million dollars. If we're doing really well and we cruise through the end of the year like we did last year, um, then it's going to be around a million. But, uh, my, my idea is that it falls somewhere in between.
Yeah, split the difference and go seven fifty. Okay. So then the next. Following my own formula. So that's what we would, out of, that's the fund balance. Now, we have to decide what we would historically like to give back.
So, well, or, I guess.
Or do warrants or retain it. And you can only retain five percent of the district's maximum evaluation, not the fund balance, but the total evaluation of the district. So, um, as Mary indicated, the town gets its own evaluation. Typically, they're, they're higher because they have those subdepartments of sewer, water. Uh, they have utilities in the town that they sell. So they're, they get a revenue machine out of it. Uh, the only thing that really acts like that for us, and it's not like a profit driver, it's more of just a revenue stream. It's, uh, the food service fund, um, where we're selling the goods. So, and that's half a million dollars. You know, so. That, that is, that is kind of the gist of what I have to offer for, for information that needs to help guide you make a decision. I don't want to tell you how to do it. Um, I can definitely go through trust balances with you, um, as well, but. But if you start at seven fifty and. I, I don't know, you know, the maximum evaluation of the district at the end of. This cycle, so that's a little harder to predict. Um, I don't know what you can ultimately retain, but I would probably keep it within that average sphere. Because it doesn't look like we've ever needed to retain.
No, and I, I want to say, weren't we keeping, weren't we just keeping it at? Because it just moved to five percent two-ish years ago. And prior to that, we were just doing the two and a half percent that it was.
But the other thing about that is I think this is the last budget that you're going to really see. A large fund balance.
As we move towards this more. Um, actual budget development approach that will continue next year. It's going to change, yeah. The idea is to keep getting closer and closer to actually just meeting your bottom line and not exceeding it, you know, or falling under it, but.
But this. The seven fifty number that we've sort of come to, that's the number that we're going to take.
The five percent out of and the warrants out of, because, because you're just using that as an estimated fund balance.
Right, yep.
Yeah. Yeah, and I, and I think that's still a, a reasonably conservative estimate too. I mean, it's the, I think it's what it, what the system's projecting is far too large right now. Um, but that's without a lot of reconciliation work, so.
And what? Do we, I know that, I mean. We don't have to leave all of these art- all these articles on here, because I know that these are just from last year or whatever.
As an example, to show you some of the funds they were using, yeah.
Do you have an estimate? On what the ar- what the warrant articles for this year total? I, you could.
So last, at the end, we don't have any money this year that were, there weren't any monetary warrants in twenty-three. So like, we didn't have to use fund balance to pay for any warrants this year. It just all went back to the town. Uh, which is why there's like a blank in twenty-three, but, uh, the, um. To start doing it again is a good thing because your savings accounts, so. I always look at it as, if you're not taxed now, then when are you going to get taxed?
Right.
I, you know, I don't know. For me, it's relative because I live in the financial world, but I know at the same time, people go through tough times at different times, you know? So, I mean, people feel financial strain. Some do, some don't, and then it swaps over time. Uh, you know, that's hard because I'd, I'd like to leave money with the town that we don't have to take to begin with, um, just less room for error. But.
But that. I, yeah, I understand the statement, but we always, even now that we're budgeting at a more critical level, actual versus. That you still have to allow somewhere in there for cash flow. So if you get hit with four big bills. On the first and you got a payroll due on the fifteenth. You kind of gotta do that, but that's that, I don't want to use the word flow, but.
Yeah, floating is more for grants, that's true flow.
We've pretty much always begun our budget year with an X, an additional amount of money. We average, average this district spends, what, one point one million?
A month?
A month?
Yeah, roughly. I'd say, I'd say, when the, when the district is fully operational, um, you know, with, with this proper staff in place, yeah, it's roughly a million a month.
Okay.
Probably a little more.
So that's that magic million that we, that we started the, this year with and you see that we're now giving it back to them. But in order to, to be, have positive cash flow at all times, I think you have to have some of that in there.
I would agree. I think it's pertinent to, to, of course, I don't want to oversell it and then not take what we need to survive. Because there's, as Mary's alluding to, there's just situations that you run into where you have a payroll and a big project pops up at the same time and then you can't, you, you have to pick. And that's not a situation for the district to.
We're never not going to pay our employees, let's.
Yeah, well, no, and I don't, I mean, that's just, yeah, those are the things that popped off my head.
Yeah, no, I know, I'm kidding.
But then, of course, if the kitchen goes down and then you get to shut down school and then ask for supplemental appropriation, it gets messy and time consuming. And that's, no one wants that. Either. There, there's extremes on either side.
So in order to fill in dollar amounts. In these articles for our trust funds, we really have to know.
What the balance is.
Yeah.
Okay, I've included the most recent MS nine. It's called twenty-twenty trustees one. It's just that I would upload it into your board folder. And on the bottom of that page, make sure you're using the appropriate tab, November's the most recent that I have. Uh, is the school trust funds. And all the way to the right, you'll find after any income. The total balance currently of that specific warrant, um, excuse me, specific. Capital reserve fund or trust fund. The remainder of that. Uh, excuse me, I'm, I'm just speaking right now, but the, the funds here. Are, are good from November and we haven't taken any money out of those funds since November. So we know the balances are, are, are good, except for they're probably missing December's interest. But they're, you know, they're still, this is an amount that you can look at. And we can, we can try and make some guesses and I can try and help, uh, with outside experience too, because I've seen. Funds that are, and for some of these, I've seen them higher balanced and for some of them. I haven't seen before and some of them I've s- I have seen and I haven't, I have more experience with than others, but, um. That's kind of the gist, but go ahead and open up to questions, conversation, we'll figure it out.
Is the. The new funds created? It, is that?
It seems to be additions to the fund.
Like from last year?
Yeah, essentially. I, I don't know how. I am not a master of how this spreadsheet is tracked.
Okay.
Uh, in my previous employment, I received a packet from the actual investment firm. That captured different data for me. That was a little easier to steer. I'm just not used to this format, so. Because it's hard to see what they see internally when they use the document.
Right.
But I did question that and I, and, and they're not new additions. They're just monies that were added to the fund. And I don't know when they're first recorded because I, like, I didn't go write them checks in November of twenty-three.
I think those were on last year's warrant, if I remember, like school kitchen equipment.
They probably got the money from us. At the beginning. Of last year's this year.
Right.
But they must still carry it on that spreadsheet.
Oh, one of the other things I think that plays into this is, for example, we've got hundred and one thousand in the bus CRF. So if one of the. Things that we may be trying to spend balance of E three is a couple more buses. Because we don't, I mean, what if COVID comes back and we need to resocial distance and things like that? So if we have a rough idea of what things may be coming out of Esser, we could maybe skip a year. And prioritize some of the ones that are a lot lower.
Can I give a brief? Esser kind of spiel? For Esser, I've done a lot of research. There is what they have, they call an SAT, which is a simplified acquisition threshold, which dictates what you can purchase. On a very high level under Esser and how you purchase it, kind of like procurement policy for this district. Um, and so like our policy is if the amount's ten thousand dollars or more, this, this, and this happens, if this, this, and this happens, then do this. Uh, for Esser. Anything under two hundred and fifty thousand dollars meets two criteria, micro purchase, which is ten thousand and under, or small purchase. Anything above two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is instantly. It needs to follow formal procedure that we have written in our district. Um, and it has to be like a bid or an RFP. And you have to get sealed bids or competitive proposals. And in this document that I have here, I can send it out after, um, dictates when you do that. And how you do it and like what the situation is. It has some bullet points for each one. Uh, and then there's a little tid- tidbit about the micro purchases as well. So like as we get into purchasing for Esser, we're going to be following this stuff. Pretty specifically, just to make sure, you know, like moving forward, everything is procured the right way. So that being said, with Esser, the focus is on learning loss. I think, I think there's an overarching theme of learning altogether, you know, I think the two kind of run hand in hand. Uh, there's security. Um, so what it takes to provide a secure learning environment is curriculum, what it takes to deliver that information to a child. Uh, so there's a lot we can do. And so security gets expensive. Uh, so a lot of the things that we are doing to secure the buildings, I hope will end up under Esser. As we kind of bring those projects forward for March and get them ready, you know, for your consideration. Give you an idea, right? So like if we wanted to rekey the buildings. Uh, and the cost is under ten thousand dollars, you have, you, you as a board have the ability to sign off on that. If it's over ten thousand dollars and we get quotes and you find the number acceptable, you have the ability to sign off on that. Only when it's above two hundred and fifty thousand dollars does it get a little murky and like, we may not even get it at all. Can they still say no below two hundred and fifty? Yes, there's just rest, a little bit less scrutiny, a little bit more. Um, they're going to work with us to make it happen, especially if it's something our district needs or if it's something a child needs to learn or, you know, etcetera. You know, as long as it falls under that criteria, you can begin thinking about it.
But they also go through the portal for approval.
A hundred percent. They have to be approved. That's in here too. So if, 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 if we submit something to the state and they approve it, it's accepted. So they're, they're called a pass-through agency because it's the state handling the federal money, so they can approve things for us too, but. Uh, there's a lot, a wide scope of things that can be put in Esser, under that. Cat, um, those descriptions, if you will, so.
So, so we need to figure out which.
Yeah, and that's why I had a big project discussion too coming up, so you guys had an idea of like things that needed to be done, but. I know that's like a really long meeting and we also need to get this done and it's. A bunch of ones.
I mean. I think we definitely need to increase the kitchen equipment line.
Yeah, because didn't we just scarf out of that?
Yeah.
I think the plan was to, was to do that, yeah, and get reimbursed from it. I think we just made that expense, so I'm not sure it's been reimbursed yet, but. Um, like I said, I haven't done any since November.
But it was to be reimbursed through Esser, right?
Uh, what they're talking about is the kitchen trust fund. So they're talking about replenishing that fund now.
We spend it and then we go to trustee and trust funds and give them all minutes and.
But I thought. We did buy or talk about buying a walk-in freezer, didn't we?
We talked about it.
Okay.
Uh, you think that's it?
We replaced a dishwasher at Henry Wilson.
Right.
And there was a, a heat lamp of some sort that the kitchen needed that I believe we purchased.
Existential emergencies also count to waive the whole procurement policy. So like if our kids can't eat, they're probably going to really work with us.
Right, right, right.
You know, so.
But if those items were purchased out of standard operating budget, then we haven't depleted the, uh, CRFs.
Right.
Not yet, right, right.
But they will be.
If, if they're being taken out of the CRF, yeah.
Right. What is? So the buildings and grounds. That's eight hundred and two dollars. Is that just a?
Farmington School District Buildings Grounds CRF ninety-three. I don't know what the ninety-three means, but I, it was made in ninety-three, so I have a feeling that's what it is. Um, fourteen hundred ninety twenty-five is what you're looking at? Or the, oh, the eight oh two forty-three, the beginning balance, yeah. It's at fourteen nine ninety right now. It's not much higher, but, um, that, that could be a good place. To start putting away for improvements, uh, for the buildings and grounds. Yeah, absolutely. I don't know how to read the construction and renovation or how that's different from buildings and ground.
That's because this, when this, well, actually.
Okay, so this says improvement. So this can only be improvements to existing structures and field improvement.
Yeah, and. I, well, there was. Oh, no, I'm thinking of FHS Construction and Renovation Fund.
Which is the high school.
That was when this building was.
Yeah, that, you don't need to put any money into that.
No, 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 no. I, I just wanted to make sure that that wasn't the same that I was thinking of.
Out of unex- one second, out of unexpended fund balance, we did a lot, yeah, we did, in the contingency, I think. I want to make sure that the sprinkler system was covered because originally some of it was kind of.
Did we do a public hearing on?
No, but we are.
Well, we tried real hard.
Well, no, we have to.
Yeah, because I haven't. The project, so I think the project was authorized to start in October, not to bring up another. Cam, but we got to figure that out too. We got to do a public hearing for that.
We were going to.
But I thought we were, we were going to spend that out of unexpended fund balance.
Yes, we were. We did. And then that.
You retained it, but then once you retain it, Mary's point is you have to have a hearing to approve the expenditure.
Okay.
We held it back out of that.
Right, 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 right.
And, and Cheryl, did you, did we have a public, there was no public hearing, you only tried, right?
What happened was, I reminded everybody on the fourth, Stacy wasn't here, Joel said, I will tell Stacy to put, because we can run a public here on simultaneous to. An ongoing meeting.
Exactly.
Right.
I think I sent an email.
Okay, but we can. We can do it, like, get it on the agenda if we meet again next week or whatever.
It was.
It has to have seven day public notice, so.
Right. Anyways, well, I mean, just looking at this for, I mean. I would think we would want to set money aside. In the. What was the first line that I seen?
Construction renovation or buildings and grounds. Were the two you had brought up.
Alright, buildings and grounds. Now, see that twenty thousand next to outdoor athletic facilities? That's the twenty thousand for the tennis courts, right?
That was last year.
Right, last year. And then school equipment fund.
That must be for general equipment, but.
Oh, kitchen equipment, that's what I said. That's what.
Kitchen equipment, yeah.
Sorry.
Is, is column G your recommendations?
No, column G, I think is, I'm taking it as what was on the last, last year's warrant. Because I, I think wasn't la- last year where we asked for twenty thousand, or was that the year before last, for the tennis courts? Do you remember?
I think it was.
I just.
Year before.
Yeah, it's, it, it pops in at some point. After May, I think of twenty-three, so it looks like maybe after the end of the year. Nope. It's in May. I'm trying, I'm trying to find when those numbers first popped up on there.
Are we honestly going to be able to find the numbers for?
Are we honestly going to be able to find the numbers for all of these?
I think it's just something they carry month to month. I don't think they're, I don't think they're like additions in November.
And we don't have to, we don't, yes. I mean, I would only. Recommend putting. Like three of these on the warrant if we want to. Increase any of these lines, I think more than that, it kind of starts adding a lot of.
I think Mac put them all on there because he didn't know where we.
Right.
Okay, so what does the board feel like then? So like. Out of which ones? Like out of the buildings and grounds, I got to.
I mean, I, we've just had a lot of kitchen. Items, I, I mean, I think we increased that line by at least 10 to 15,000. I would say the same for. I'd say at least 10 in athletic facilities, outdoor athletic facilities.
And you said how much in kitchen, 15?
15.
The general school equipment, well.
That's what, it's so weird that it's such like a low, like.
But is, is some of that. New word, essorable?
I would, I, that's what I'm thinking, I.
I mean, it's, it's low to begin with, but.
But I think like the ones that are like really like. I mean, I think it's really low at three, you know, 30, $400. But maybe that, maybe we're spending at a different places and that line isn't historically that high. I don't.
I think it's going to be hard this year. I think next year we'll have a better idea. Well, that's what I'm. We'll no longer have.
Esser to fall back on.
To fall back on.
Yeah, it might be more useful to think about what's not essorable. Right, because when you get stuck two years down the road, what do you want in your savings account?
But the money, I mean, yeah.
Right.
That's why I said things like the bus, the bus fund. I, I really think we should be able to.
I am curious about the heating system replacement. It's at 100, but it was formed in 18, so it must be something they wanted to accrue quickly. There has to be something going on. I, I know I've heard Larry talk about the technology behind the heating. But I don't know, well, it doesn't say which heating system, like it would be three, but.
A lot of, all of your boilers are at or beyond their life expectancy.
That would explain that, yeah.
And on top of that. Replacement parts are either hard to come by or can't be found. It's, it's an issue waiting to happen.
We did bring that, we talked about that.
And that's as, that's as of your report from four years ago.
I mean, I just. I, I mean, I think looking at. These funds. I would think 99% of them are essorable.
I would say. Right, thinking of that, the 250, I mean. At 150, there's extra rules too, but at, at the 250 range, we're talking about big, big projects, like. They affect the building, which I don't know that we're going to really get into too many of, of those. You know, I don't see it where it's like we're just going to go replace a bunch of roofs or anything. I would love to, but I think. Replacing a part of a roof would be an essorable thing, because there's kids that are sitting underwater. So they're going to understand that.
Right.
But they're not going to, they're going to say you should be putting away for that, so. That might be something to.
I think we found. The last. I don't think the roof, the big roof project that we did. When first got on was essorable. I don't think we did that roof replacement from Esser.
Yeah, I, I, I doubt it because well, once it gets that big, they're going to ask you to probably chip in.
You've got to. You've got until March before these things even get finalized. Then you've got the RFP process, then you've got to get in the schedule and before you know it, it's August. And this expires in.
Yeah, so I, you know, that, I mean, the smaller projects, the security projects, which are also expensive, I can probably get them done. Like the big projects, I think Mary's right. I think A, it could not go in, B, are we going to even have time to, to have that project finished? And then what kind of issues did that cause for us down the road if we don't, so. Maybe those are the funds that you focus on putting your money into in case we do need it down the road, but. I don't, I, I'm, this is a hard job because. It's a bit of guesswork and we have to use our best judgment, that's, and that's all we have.
Okay. Other than, well, I mean, not that we have to go with whatever I'm looking at, but.
What do you think, Joel?
Do we? Do we? Do we pick two or three and? Add to those?
Let's set a spending mode, let's say we want to spend 50,000. I mean, that, I'm just throwing a number.
Yeah, no, I know.
And I would also. If I'm correct about contingency fund, if we put like. 150,000, 200,000 in contingency and some of these don't cover. A new boiler or whatever contingency, you're allowed to. Tap into that.
Alright, so.
And that's where that historical data might help guide that part of the conversation. You can look at those averages and. Take your projected fund balance and, and manipulate it.
Okay, let's just start with, start at the very top, folks, line 68, 88 75. New facility, I don't.
That's no.
That's a no. I think the buses are no because I really think we can.
I think we have, we have done it before and we've got money in there, so I'm not worried about it.
And grounds, CRF.
Now, I know the fields, the fields tend to be vandalized on occasion. And there's some other things, you know, I don't know, but.
Put the next line down.
It's outdoor athletic facilities.
So the grounds improvements must be for general improvements, athletic must be for athletic, okay.
I'm assuming that that buildings and grounds CRF. For improvements came about when this building was built. To put funds to make it look nice and make the district buildings look.
Like they're all connected, they have a walkway, you know, they have outdoor lanes, things like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's got to be.
So are we fine just leaving it?
I'm fine leaving that.
At the 802?
Yeah, and then outdoor athletic.
I mean, I'd say. At least 10 grand in there, just.
I was going to go with 10.
Yeah.
I mean, I love it all, I love La Paul.
Renovations is going to be one of those things that. We know we've got lots of them to do, but we don't have time.
Right.
And things like windows, I just, I don't see how you could get windows passed through Esser, so.
Secure, security.
Yeah.
It, it's a security thing.
We've got security.
And that's one of the four big tenants of Esser, they want it going to security.
But you've got security way down near the bottom.
Oh, trust funds, sorry, yes, I'm conflicting with myself with the Esser conversation. Do it, don't do it, do it.
I'm good with the 70,000.
Me too.
FSD technology, we can certainly get more. Computers and.
Uh, school equipment fund, I just, I don't know what that. Is that like a catchall for anything that doesn't fall into any other, any other equipment?
Yeah, I'm going to say non-special ed equipment.
Yeah.
Stuff, like, because there is a special ed fund.
Right.
It, it must be something.
If somebody breaks their. Teacher's chair, we're not going to go to CRF.
Exactly, exactly.
No, I would say more like if half the lockers got hit by a car or so, I don't know.
Okay, let's.
Yeah.
I don't know what.
Well, no, oh, yeah.
I thought that was supposed to be closed.
Well, I think we brought it.
SDM, you just don't use it anymore.
Yeah, because I think when we did the paving, I think we brought it down to the lowest that.
Okay, yeah, that's probably right. Heating system.
I mean. You could.
What are we at so far?
10 grand.
That was hard.
I know, right?
Should we put?
I mean, you could, you could put 25 grand in there.
Heating and school kitchen equipment.
That's the last places I would put money.
Right.
25 and heating.
25 into heating, especially knowing that the boilers and all that, right?
And that's not essorable and neither is.
Heating could be essorable if it explodes this year and it becomes an existential.
Was that a direct, was that a directive?
Oh, no.
Equipment, should we add maybe 20 to that? Oh no, that would be over.
Well, no, I mean, that, that was just like a guideline, but. Yeah, I would say at least 15 in there or.
We're at 36.
Yeah, and don't forget that with the kitchen, at least it's making you your money back. So if you put money into it, you're making some of it back. It's a revenue tool.
15 grand in there the last time, I'm comfortable with that number again.
Security, we know there's a whole category in Esser for that.
Exactly.
And then robotics.
Can anyone speak to that? Is there, we have a, we still have one? Yeah, I was going to say.
I don't, I guess I'm.
Robotics.
Just now aware that we have a CR, I mean.
We're, we're talking about robotics money, we still have a robotics program?
But I thought, don't Valley View or Henry Wilson doesn't have a robotics club? No, okay.
I don't think Valley View does, I won't say for that.
There's 13 grand in the CRF and we're trying to decide whether we continue to build.
There is a state grant you can get for robotics.
Yeah.
So I'd say we leave that.
I say leave it.
I say leave it.
Okay, so 10. 10 grand in outdoor athletics, 25 grand in heating and 15 in kitchen?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, sorry, one more time, outdoor.
Outdoor athletic, 10.
Okay.
Heating system. 25.
Okay.
Kitchen. 15.
Okay.
But I'll make that, or no, we're going to vote on each one anyway.
I think we can.
Can we just blanket that? I'll make a motion. For articles, what, seven, eight and nine?
Right, it would be article seven, eight and nine, correct?
Correct.
So.
To be 10K for outdoor athletics, 25K for heating and 15 for kitchen.
Next we talk about.
Wait a minute, we just made a second on that. Any further discussion?
Yep.
No? All those in favor?
Contingency, I think, I think we should, I've, I'm. 150,000.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Retained?
For, yes.
Contingency.
So that becomes article 10.
Is the retaining a warrant article?
No, it is not.
It's a vote after and then a public, okay. You have, I think you have to do it once and then if it passes and you have the ability to use the, yeah, I think that's one of them. Because Milton, Milton didn't have that, they were trying. They thought we were going to buy Teslas.
And put a plow in the front.
Yeah.
I love it.
So currently, the article 11 on this draft will now become article 10, correct?
Yes.
In the event that proposed budget's up for than article 3 fails.
This is correct.
Okay.
I'm going to go ahead and do that now. Paint control, I love it.
Take it.
You guys are a great board.
Alright. Anything?
So if there were other CRFs on there that we didn't indicate, just delete them and renumber.
Yeah.
Make those articles seven, eight, nine.
Right, and then. That's it, right?
That's it. Most of that work has been done, so I will need to go home and add in the trust fund amounts.
We have to vote on articles.
10 and 11?
Yes, just to.
Well, what's article 10? In the. Oh, that's the. Well, no, that's the mainstay, adding.
10 and 11 are, one is mainstay, one is SROs.
Right.
Because what happens if.
Right, because if, if, if the.
If proposed fails, then those two don't live in default, so we have to ask permission.
Correct.
If, if proposed passes, then those two just don't get functioned.
So it will say that we're recommending this appropriation.
It will.
Yes.
Assuming you do, at the hearing.
We're doing 501 on all of these.
Yes, yeah, yeah. They all do. No, you're doing great Nicole, and you're asking the right questions, I mean, that's, that's important.
Okay, so we're done with this?
That's, yeah, so warrants are, we're going to revisit in non-public. For article four and then.
We don't vote, we just did a presentation.
They have to, they have to ratif- ratify the document, Nicole, and then they can proceed with article four on the.
Yeah.
Or you as a board have to ratify the.
Article five.
Thank you, yes.
Yeah.
I know, you guys keep saying four, so I know.
I just did it too. Thank you.
Can. Can we make a motion to table? Well, we kind of went over some Esser projects tonight, but we can, that, that can be continued for another day.
Power school quote.
Power school quote, high school door quote, GSKS agreement, roof repair. And kindergarten registration number.
And the emergency ops plan.
Emergency ops plan until next meeting. What's matter?
I, I think you're going to fall into this, I know we spent a lot of time on more articles.
Right.
But I think.
We can.
We need to plug in one little meeting here to get through some of this stuff. Otherwise it's going to continue to build.
Oh, no, we don't.
No, we don't.
I, sorry, it's first and third.
So I think we need.
There's been a holiday, sorry, everybody.
Are they open? Is school open?
No, it's next week, federal holiday was close. Next week's the federal holiday?
We checked this morning and we were all like.
I miss that party.
I mean, I can do a meeting next week.
I can, I'm fine to do whatever the board needs.
I can do it tomorrow night.
I can't do tomorrow.
A double feature. I like it all.
I, my week is this week.
Well, I mean, we could try, let's see what it's like two weeks, I just. I guess it would be beefy again.
Start at six on the 22nd?
We can.
I know it's only an extra half hour, but.
I have to check my social calendar.
Or 5:30, or is it too early? I don't know, I'm like, can we just start a little earlier? I'd rather start a little earlier, get through it then set up.
Right.
Then stay later or something, you know what I mean?
I mean, I. I just, I know we're at 10 past 10 and we still have a couple of things to still go over in non-public, I just. Don't want people to feel like they're going to get out their sleeping bags.
I'm about to.
So. Can we motion to table those items? To next meeting.
A date to be determined.
There is a me, unless we can, I'm okay with meeting next week, as long as we can get a form.
I'm open.
I'm, I'll be here.
For what day next week?
Seventeenth, I don't know.
Let's just do the twenty-second.
And then something comes up, we can revisit.
It's a good thought, I forgot it was holiday.
I did too. So I will make a motion to table those items to the next meeting on the twenty-second. All those in favor?
I do have one other item to bring up. Delivered is February third. We are required to have the school district reports available to the public one week before. And there is a lot of stuff in there that we don't have. So.
Do you guys review all the information first, do we bring the, do we bring the report to you for approval, is that?
Cause I had a due date with the administrators for the twenty-seventh, but I couldn't move that up.
And we looked at, we looked at last.
Of what, oh, January.
January.
The deliberative.
No, no, also remember that this. There's at least ten days of printing time.
Is it before the annual meeting or the deliberative?
It's before deliberative.
We don't, no, Cheryl looked and last year, we didn't even purchase the printing service until mid-February. So it's for the, I believe the annual report goes with the annual meeting.
Okay, okay.
That's what I recall, cause we were, Cheryl and I were concerned about it, and we looked to solidify our timeline, like when do we need to press?
I was concerned too.
I mean, Jim was sweating, but he just wasn't in the room when we were doing it.
So just, just to conclude that and move it along, if we're going to do a dedication, we should be thinking about it.
Yes, we should. And. Mary, you've already had one.
Are you gonna be the first one to get town and school?
I'm the only one to hold.
Person of the year.
No offense to Mary, but we did lose us partially. I don't know the name, but that sounds.
That's where my brain is going.
Alright, well. We tabled those, any more public participation? I know, my goodness, okay, our next meeting is January twenty-second.
The hearing on Wednesday?
Hearing on Wednesday, well, we don't need a meeting to do it.
Right. Budget meet, yes.
And if we do, we.
Right?
No, I already got it.
We have some manifests, the gift that keeps giving, and I will make a motion to go into. Non-public session three under RSA ninety-one A three-two A B C nominations and resignations.
Second.
All those in favor? Good night, everybody, happy new year.